Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Arushi Dama, and Robert Paris, Juliana McGrain with sports, Gretchen Carey with the community calendar, and Peter Brown returning from hiatus with the weather. Thank you for joining us. The busy September town meeting concluded after another long session finishing just before midnight Monday night. As reported last week, after hours of discussion and debate, $340 million, or 335 million, I think exactly, was approved for the BHS building project. This week, town meeting picked up where they left off, voting to approve $45,000 for a special election that will decide on the debt exclusion for the project. That's about 15,000 more than a regular town election due to the expected higher turnout for what's being called the biggest dollar amount election in town history. Another major article on the warrant came from Norbloom Company. Developer Todd Fremont Smith outlined a plan to demolish two vacant buildings on Middlesex Turnpike and replace them with a 188-unit multifamily complex across from Third Ave. The project required an amendment to the zoning bylaws, adding an additional sub-district to the MBTA community's multifamily overlay district. While some town meeting members raised concerns about traffic and population density, others spoke in favor, saying the development would improve walkability and expand housing options in town. The amendment passed. There was also lengthy discussion over a new fee for long-term health care facilities that call the fire department for assistance in lifting residents. That article ultimately passed. The Conservation Commission brought back a proposed bylaw amendment to separate conservation regulations from the town bylaws. Despite revisions and clarification from the Chair, Larry Cohen, the measure once again failed in a closed vote. Cohen expressed his disappointment at the town meeting at the recent Conservation Commission meeting.
I have other business. It's called Town Meeting. And we thought that it sounded like a very good idea that we would make it very clear exactly what we were moving into the regulations and what we were retaining in the bylaw. And we did make the point that, and Sarah was there, and maybe others were there, that everything that makes the bylaw work was being retained in the bylaw under town meeting control. We were not changing anything that would affect how the thing works. Unfortunately, a lot of the content, a lot of the discussion tended to revolve around almost a more general distrust. I mean, at the time, I took it as the Conservation Commission, but I finally realized that there's a fair number of people in town meeting that have a general distrust of government. And it's not normal in local government. Usually, I mistakenly believed that, having 35 years on the Conservation Commission, I actually believed that we have probably established a stellar reputation of working with all the stakeholders whenever we want to do something, and making sure we find a path forward that's agreeable to everybody. So I don't know if anyone was watching this, but they probably sensed the frustration.
The evening concluded with a non-binding resolution concerning violations at the ICE detention facility in Burlington, introduced by town meeting member Phyllis Newfeld. The article prompted strong discussion, including remarks from Select Board Chair Micah Spel.
Right now, the perception out there is we're okay with this. I'd like to share a graphic that a friend sent to me. I think it speaks for itself. When I saw it, my stomach dropped and it angered me. These days, we are so divided, and so partisan, and so quick to line up on party lines. In my heart and soul, I do not believe this is a partisan issue. What I do believe is that this is a human issue. A yes vote tonight would send a strong and distinct messages to our residents, our businesses, our Commonwealth, our country, and the world, that Burlington does not tolerate cruel and inhumane treatment of anybody that enters our town.
You can be dragged off the street at any time by ICE with as much violence as they want, and there's nothing that anybody can ever do about it. You cannot go to the police, you cannot go to the state police, and believe me, you cannot go to the FBI. This is so deeply un-American that I urge people to say this is not okay with the people of this town.
Is there anyone from Department of Homeland Security or ICE here to respond to any of these allegations? They knowingly are breaking promises and breaking our rules, and they have no need to come explain themselves or their actions to us. So, I mean, I take that as a pretty big slap in the face, you know, no matter what your politics are.
This is not a political issue. It doesn't matter what you think these people have done or haven't done. It's about being humane, treating people with humanity and respect. So I urge you all to vote yes tonight.
The resolution passed overwhelmingly with only five members voting against. For a full recap of Town Meeting, visit our website. Norbloom wasn't just in the spotlight at Town Meeting this week. They are also making headlines through art. The company partnered with a local nonprofit, Beyond Walls, whose mission is to bring public art and curated experiences into communities. Together, they've added some color and creativity up at Third Ave in Burlington. Tad Stefanak has the story.
The Norbloom Company has made an effort to bring Third Ave and the Northwest Park to life through art, and recently embarked on their latest artistic endeavor with Beyond Walls.
So Beyond Walls is a creative placekeeping, placekeeping nonprofit. We're headquartered in Lynn, Massachusetts, with the mission of activating spaces to strengthen communities. We do a number of different types of work. We're mostly known for our large-scale street art, but we do do commissioned services pieces, right? So private enterprise, public enterprise can reach out to us and say, look, we desire a piece of art, whether that's on the exterior of their building or interior. We have several thousand artists in our registry.
The owners actually mentioned that they had a sailboat in the family, a Wyano Senior Sailboat, so we wanted to honor that. And also tie in Cape Cod's coastline with the hydrangeas. So I went with a macro photography, double exposure, where you see the sailboat and the flowers kind of fused together in a really beautiful way, very photorealistic.
This project is about honestly being able to infuse art here in Burlington. They have done tremendous work in building out this area, so they wanted to provide art further support their live-work-play location, where you have restaurants, you work here, you know, you can live here. And so this project for us means being able to bring some of the best artists that we know, being able to have a piece of art here, large scale, that not only represents our work, but also represents how they want to see the area here.
It's super rewarding, and obviously with more eyes on it, it's kind of a really cool way to kind of get your work out there into the world. Very, very unique.
It's the first of several, so, you know, stay tuned.
From the new mural in Northwest Park, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
Well, I must say, that's really beautiful. Burlington now has its first-ever communications officer. Laura Zakreski was officially appointed at the most recent Select Board meeting. Assistant Town Administrator Patrick Lawler, who was involved in the hiring process, praised her for her compelling presentations and said demonstrated that she is a knowledgeable and effective communicator. She brings experience in agency-level marketing and holds a bachelor's degree in advertising and marketing communications from Johnson &amp; Wales, as well as an MBA from UMass Lowell. Select Board members expressed excitement about filling the new role. Member Nick Priest, who has long advocated for the position, called the appointment a major step forward. The board also encouraged tempered expectations as the responsibilities of the communications officer continued to evolve. The Burlington Police Department is moving to a temporary location on November 1st as preparations continue for the construction of the new police station. The department will operate out of the former Vine Brook Water Treatment Plant at 171 Middlesex Turnpike until a new station is complete. Officials say the phone number remains the same, 272-1212, and reminds residents to use 911 for all emergencies. For any questions or additional information, the Burlington Department encourages the public to reach out directly. The Bill Ricker Community Farmers Market has been named the number-one farmers market in Massachusetts for the fourth year in a row. The honor comes from the 2025 America's Farmers Market Celebration, a national event that recognizes the best local markets across the country. Bill Ricker topped the list in Massachusetts, finishing ahead of Wilmington and Belmont, and also ranked fourth overall in the Northeast. Market President Crystal Thomas says the recognition belongs to the community, thanking residents and volunteers for their continued support. The market runs on Monday afternoons, June through October, at 793 Boston Road, featuring dozens of local farms, food trucks, and small businesses. Burlington's annual Food Truck Festival returns to the Town Common, treating residents to a day of food, music, and community fun, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department. Let's look.
Hungry residents lined up at the Burlington Town Common for the annual Trucktober event, hosted by the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department.
Trucktober is one of our more laid-back events. So some of the planning, I mean, we reach out to food trucks, try to get them here. We, you know, book a band, we advertise, we get some sponsors. We have some great sponsors, Northeastern and Kohler by Right Window. You know, we set up all these games. We do a Power Wheel Derby, which is a lot of fun. Yeah, so it's a good time.
From fried chicken to tacos, there was something for everyone to enjoy.
Just the people. It's great. We kind of see familiar faces every year. We're obviously right down the road, so a lot of people that visit us in the store and know our menu well.
And where else can we find your food trucks?
You can find us all around, Massachusetts, New Hampshire. We're opening up a new store in Tinsborough as well, so you'll be able to find more locations hopefully soon to come.
So Taco Livre, we've been working on Taco Livre for the last three and a half years. So we basically doing this to support our two daughters in college. So this is paying for everything. It's a lot of work, but it's a lot of profit, so it's worth it.
That's amazing. And can you tell me about what you're selling here today?
So we do like Mexican street food. So we have like tacos, burritos, tortas. It's a little more authentic, not like the classic Mexican food in a restaurant. So this is definitely different. Every day has been, you know, whatever you get today is from today, and we try to keep it fresh, and the customers know it.
What makes this event so popular? It's low-key fun and a perfect spot to grab a delicious bite.
To be honest, I think food brings people here. But then, I mean, people that know, you know, we get bands that typically people know of, and that might bring a few. And I just think the weather today probably is bringing a lot of people out today as well.
This is B News Weekly.
We welcome B News meteorologist Peter Brown back to the studio after a hiatus away. He returns just in time as the weather is taking a quick turn to colder and wetter weather. He has your full forecast right after our community calendar.
Hey, everyone. I'm Gretchen Carey, and this is your community calendar. On October 16th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., the Burlington Community Scholarship Foundation will be hosting a softball game versus the Fire and Police Departments at Marvin Field. For more information and to get tickets, go to the following website. On October 18th, from 2:30 to 7:00 p.m., the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department will be having their Halloween Spooktacular at Simons Park. For more information on the event, go to their website. On October 19th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., the Burlington Girl Scouts will be having their annual trunk-or-treat event. It will be held at the BHS Faculty Parking Lot. There is no fee to participate. For more information, go to our website. For more community calendar events, go to bcattv.org, burlingtonpubliclibrary.org, and burlingtonrecreation.org. I'm Gretchen Carey, and that was your community calendar.
Well, hello, everyone. This is Peter Brown with a look at the weather for the next seven days. Now, I am not a figment of your imagination. I'm not an AI-generated image. It is really me. I am back with you, and so happy to be back with all of you. And we're going to be starting out with a look at our weather here, going into the second week of October. I know it's hard to believe that we are that far into the fall already, and we should be seeing temperatures again at this time of the year in the mid-60s, so average, you know, very pleasant out there, cooling off from the warm summer that we just had. And we're going to be about that when we start our period on Friday, this long weekend coming up. We're going to be a long ways from these record highs. Interestingly enough, that's about where we've been in the Burlington area over the past couple of days. We've seen so many days with temperatures in the low to mid-80s. Summer has really been trying to hang on here, and it looks like it is finally being pushed out of the way. And by the time we get to the end of next period, we're getting into Thursday, next work week, we should be seeing temperatures again at this time of the year in the low to mid-60s. And I think that's about where we're going to be. We're going to see much more average weather as opposed to those really warm temperatures. And of course, you notice as we start heading further into October, our length of day is getting considerably shorter now. We're not going to be having sunsets after 6:00 p.m. for much longer now. So I know that's a little bit of depressing bit of news as we head towards fall, but we do have some still beautiful weather before the dreaded winter season comes in. So as we go ahead, let's take a look at what the Climate Prediction Center is calling for us in terms of temperatures here first. And again, looking at this map, nothing new. This is pretty much what we've been seeing since really going back to the start of July. They're expecting us here, especially in the Burlington area and all of New England, to have a chance of above-average temperatures. Not going to be quite as warm again like we've been seeing over the past few weeks. Still, though, a couple of degrees over what it should really be for this time of the year. And the next map is one that we've all been really wanting to pay attention to, our precipitation map. We've really been starved for moisture here in the Burlington area. And if you were trying to do any leaf peeping up in northern and central New England, they are in an exceptional drought up there. So you can definitely notice how dry it's been. And they are expecting us to have a chance of above-average precipitation. We're going to have to see if that does materialize, as we are going to be seeing a fairly potent storm developing to our south. Now, normally, I'd say, let's keep that storm away from the Burlington area. But again, we need so much water around here, we really could deal with those beneficial rains. So let's go ahead, let's take a look at the seven days of weather coming up. And again, starting out our period on Friday, starting out your long weekend, it's going to be pretty nice out there, average out there, temperatures in the mid-to-upper 60s. Now, it's going to be kind of chilly out there as you start out the morning on Friday. I wouldn't be surprised to see some frost and freeze conditions. So unfortunately for most of us, a lot of us who might still have some vegetable gardens out there, I think this is pretty much going to be the end of the growing season as we go into early Friday morning. Now, again, Sunday and Monday, this is when we're going to be looking at the development of a pretty strong low-pressure center to the south of us, more like a nor'easter-type of system. Again, no snow, don't worry about that. Looks like more in terms of high winds, heavy rain. We're going to have to see how close that gets to us here in the Burlington area. Right now, it looks like it's going to be focused mainly on the Mid-Atlantic and down into the Carolinas, but hopefully we can get at least some rain out of those clouds as we go into Sunday and Monday. No, not what you want to hear for a long weekend, but we desperately need it. Now, going back to work on Tuesday, we're going to be seeing our temperatures again, pretty average for this time of the year. And again, some showers still lingering from that storm that's going to be departing away from the East Coast. Then we get into Wednesday, looks like a beautiful day coming up. Looks like we're going to have sunny skies out there, a few fair weather clouds. Temperature's very pleasant in the mid-to-upper 60s, and it looks like we're going to continue that as we go into Thursday. Again, we're going to be introducing another round of maybe some showers out there, a little bit of unsettled weather. Definitely, again, we need any rain we can get, and temperature's pretty nice in the upper 60s to near 70. So everyone, again, great to see you again. Get out there, enjoy the weather, and have a great week.
The Red Devil football team remains undefeated after traveling to Wilmington last Friday. Juliana McGrain has the highlights from that game and more in this week's sports report.
Hello, Burlington. Welcome back to your weekly Red Devils sports report. I am your host, Juliana McGrain, and let's get right into it. The Red Devils' football team remains undefeated as they hit the road after competing against Wilmington in their latest matchup. Let's check out the highlights from that game.
The Burlington Red Devils traveled down Route 62 to face their league rival, the Wilmington Wildcats, who came in undefeated at 3-0. In the first quarter, Burlington put together a long 11-minute drive, capped off by a two-yard touchdown run from senior captain Ryan Brooks. Matt Conti added the two-point conversion, making it 8-0. Later, quarterback Mark Hollerin was picked off by Ryan Ellis, setting up the Devils in excellent field position. Drew Garvey connected with Ellis on a 25-yard touchdown pass. The two-point conversion attempt failed, but Burlington extended their lead 14-0. Wilmington finally got on the scoreboard with a 27-yard touchdown run from running back Gus Lambert, cutting the lead to 14-7. In the third quarter, the Wildcats struck again with a 70-yard touchdown run from Cam Pereira, but Burlington blocked the extra point, keeping the score 14-13. Burlington answered back in spectacular fashion when wide receiver Shane Sheehan returned the ensuing kickoff 80 yards for a touchdown, pushing the lead to 20-13. Ryan Brooks added another score with a short goal-line run, giving the Devils 26-13 advantage. With the win, Burlington remains undefeated and will travel to Melrose, who stands at 3-1 on Friday evening.
The Lady Devils soccer team improved to 7-4 after a 2-0 win over Wakefield on the 6th. Sophomores Sammy Chicalini and senior Brianna Tomith each scored a goal. The team then defeated the Tanners of Woburn on the road 4-2, moving the record to 8-4. Red Devils' boys soccer fell to Tewksbury on the road 5-2. Senior Josh Newhall scored both goals. They then traveled to Woburn on the 8th, where they lost 5-1, moving the record to 1 win, 11 losses, and 1 tie. The Burlington golf team wrapped up their season on October 6th with a 43-29 victory over a 7-2 Arlington squad. Despite finishing with a 2-10 record, head coach Bob Concepcion said that he was proud of his athletes. He said, "It was a good way to end the season. This year, we had 10 seniors, and they will be remembered for their love of golf and their love of their classmates and teammates." The Lady Devils' field hockey team fell to Belmont 5-1 last Friday, with junior Caroline Bean scoring the lone goal. They bounced back on October 7th with a 2-0 win at Wakefield as Bean and senior Carly Weber each scored. Burlington now sits at 4 wins, 5 losses, and 2 ties. The Lady Devils' volleyball team returned to the win column with a 3-2 home victory over Belmont on October 3rd, but they were defeated 3-1 on the road at Wakefield on the 7th. The record now stands at 10-3. The Burlington-Woburn girls swim team traveled to Stonemont on October 7th and secured an 87-60 win, their second of the season. The following day, the team celebrated Senior Night, honoring their graduating athletes, including yours truly.
The Woburn-Berlington Swim Team wrapped up their home meet of the season against Belmont, and it was a special one, as the team also celebrated Senior Night. In the end, the team came up just short, fallen by 10 points, 90-80. Head coach Vito Casas says he's proud of his athletes and is looking forward to the rest of the season and the upcoming league meets in November.
This senior class, I've been with them for four years now, and I've been able to watch them just crush records, make states, make sectionals. It's been great over the years. They're super fast, and that's what we ask for, my other coaching staff. We crush these girls in practice. What's been the greatest thing about this season so far is I know we have a few losses. The Woburn-Berlington name is out there, all right? Other teams are talking about us. They say you got to watch out for them. I have other coaches changing up their entire lineup to try to beat us, and it's the only way they can do it right now. We're looking forward to the end of the season at league meet, where these girls are really going to be able to push it. We're going to see some faster times. We're going to see some better scores, and we're hoping to get up there in the ranks for the league meet.
Senior Juliana McGrain reflected on how fast time has flown, and said she'll miss every minute with this team.
The amount of like community I found on this team has actually been insane. I've met like so many wonderful people who have been so supportive in like a completely beginner like me, making it like to a senior year and stuff, and like still getting time and feeling supported and everything. It's been a really great journey, and I'm kind of sad that, I'm very sad that it has to like come to an end soon, but go Wobee.
From the Woburn Boys and Girls Club, I'm Robert Paris for B News Sports.
The Red Devils cross-country teams returned to varsity field on October 7th. Let's check out the highlights.
The Burlington cross-country teams faced off against the Watertown Raiders on October 7th with mixed results. The girls fell 22-33, but 8th grader Marissa Kilroy shone, finishing first with a time of 20 minutes and 58 seconds. Despite their loss, the young squad shows strong support for one another, according to head coach Jess Nelson.
I love this team. It is our largest team that we've had since I've been coaching, and I just think that they all work together really well. It's week eight, I think, or week nine for us, and just watching them all become friends. We have girls in 8th grade all the way to girls that are seniors, and it doesn't even matter the age difference. Here, they're all on the same team, and they all are supportive of each other.
On the boys' side, Burlington dominated, defeating Watertown 50-15. Junior Moses Govathadi led the way with a first-place finish in 18 minutes and 43 seconds.
We sat our top six runners. They didn't compete today, and still, I think we finished top 10. We took all 10 spots, so some of the younger guys got a chance to get some varsity experience.
Both teams are on the road next Tuesday, October 14th, to take on Melrose. The girls hope to earn their first win of the season, while the boys, both 3-0 in the Middlesex League Freedom Division, face Melrose's team, also undefeated in the league. This matchup will help decide the league title, making it one you won't want to miss.
Red Devils Esports is back for their fall season. Here's how they're doing so far.
Heading into Week 3, the Super Smash Bros. Ultimate Team is looking for their first win. Sitting at 0-2, and currently unranked in the state, Mario Kart is holding steady at 1-1, ranked 6 in the state, and this week, they'll take on Lawrence. Fortnite is on a roll, undefeated at 2-0, and ranked 9th in the region. They'll face off against Littleton this week. NR Madden Team is coming in strong. Tommy Cullen is 2-0 and ranked 3rd in the region. Giovanni Delgado is also 2-0 and sits 4th, and Brady Casas is 1-1, ranked 18th.
Next week, we'll bring you the highlights from the Burlington High School Class 2025 Athletic Hall of Fame. And with that, that's your Red Devils Weekly Sports Report. For more coverage, head over to our sports section online and follow us on X at B News Sports. I'm Juliana McGrain, and thank you so much for hanging out with me.
Burlington High School's athletic director, Sean Hart, was named a Mass Live leader for shaping sports in Massachusetts. B News' Robert Paris sat down with Hart to talk about the honor and what it means for Burlington athletics.
Burlington High School athletic director Sean Hart has been recognized by Mass Live as one of the 2025 high school sports leaders in Massachusetts.
It was an opportunity. Mass Live is a news media outlet, and they follow a lot of the MIAA stuff that we do. They follow a lot of athletic directors and finding out what things they're doing. And I think for this particular scenario, they just kind of combined both, you know, my work at the MIAA with the work I do here at Burlington. I was kind of surprised. They did a lot of background. They asked some people some questions. So it's very nice to be honored for anything, you know what I mean? Especially, you know, doing the work in the field that you take pride in.
Hart's been leading Burlington Athletics for 10 years now, after starting his career in Westford, where he learned from mentors who have helped shape the way he leads today.
Starting my coaching career in Winchester, and then moving to Westford Academy, where I was there for 10 years, then taking my first athletic director job in Revere, which was a giant Division One urban district school. And again, you think you know everything when you walk in the doors, and you realize you don't know anything. And I think that's important to recognize, you know what I mean? And then I got to be part of an experience that I didn't know, I didn't know all the answers. And I got to getting, I was kind of brought in by people to kind of show me the way, and it was phenomenal. And then getting the job here was a huge difference for me, too. I went from a huge Division One, you know, urban school to a smaller Division Two suburban school, you know what I mean? All different. The challenges you face and the places that you go, you don't know what you don't know, but if you're open to figuring it out, then I think it works.
Outside of BHS, he also serves as Chair of the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association's Tournament Management Committee.
It's a tremendous honor. It carries a lot of weight with that particular position. You know, everything that happens in the postseason happens through our committee. So I think it's kind of viewed as one of those positions where it needs to, you know, hopefully we're doing the right things for kids and making sure we're making the right decisions for the way our state's going to be conducting itself in a tournament.
He says seeing that connection grow over the years, and watching it soon succeed on and off the field, is what keeps him passionate about what he does every day.
There is nothing better than to see community out supporting, you know what I mean? And I think that we get a very good following here, and the kids here support each other, which is the biggest part of it.
From Burlington High School, I'm Robert Paris for B News Weekly.
This week's Photo of the Week was sent in by Alita Charbonneau. Alita captured translucent wisps of clouds mixed with streetlights and sky, creating the groovy illusion of a tie-dye sheet covering the sky over Shaw's supermarket. Very cool. Thank you for the photo, Alita. Don't forget to send us your photos. The photo could be of something you see around town on vacation, or even photos of your family, friends, and pets. Whatever you think is interesting and would like to share, send them to bcatt@bcattv.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." Next week, we have the BHS Building Team, which will be presenting at the COA, and we'll take a look at the new Win Street Closet at Marshall Simons Middle School, and look at this year's BHS Athletic Hall of Fame in duck. look at this year's BHS Athletic Hall of Fame inductees and more. That's it from the news desk. I'm Phil Gallagher. See you next week. Thank you for joining us.